A little after six o'clock, I'll just go ahead and get the meeting started. Tonight, I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the indication and the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight. Take care of the business for the community, Lord, for the county. Pray that you would guide our decisions and give us wisdom in how to make those decisions, Lord. Help us to not overlook anything that's important and help us, Lord, to make, not make more of something that's not. Lord, we do pray that you would bless our servicemen and women. We pray that you would keep them safe. We pray that you'd be with our first responders, our police officers, Sheriff's Department, troopers, Lord, all those who put their lives on the line for others. We pray that you build a hedge of protection around them this evening and give them safety. Thank you for all that you're going to do. Forgive us of our sins. We pray in Christ's name before his sake.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 3rd, regular scheduled board meeting and August 5th joint workshop.
Big motion approved.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion or changes? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, have two through thirteen. Is there any that need to be pulled for discussion?
We need to pull number eight and just bring it back in a, maybe the next meeting. And then I just have a quick comment on three. On three, there's some very minor language adjustments that need to be made. So if the board will approve that with some minor language adjustments, the county attorney will work on. We talked about this today. It's otherwise, I mean, it's ready to go. There's, and I do mean minor.
Motion to approve of number eight by the county.
And the removal of number eight.
Removal, so you're making a motion to approve two through seven, nine through thirteen. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to item fourteen, discuss with possible board action, multiple requests from the supervisor election, Ms. Lynda Williams. Multiple requests.
Good evening. My first request is to be able to purchase a Model DS 450 high-speed digital image scanner for tabulating of absentee ballots. I would want this to come out of the elections equipment fund, which currently has a balance of $145,570. The purchase of this is $53,020. I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And then each year, for the first five years, there would be maintenance for $4,305. So, you know, I just want you to know that I might ask for a little bit more in my budget to cover the hardware and software. This is equipment that, when we bought the DS 200s two years ago, we have not been able to implement everything that come with that because I had an 850 counter, which we're currently using, but it's not compatible with election wear, which is the piece of equipment that we bring all the votes together with on election night. So I've been using Unity, which is the old system, until the DS 450s could be approved by the, could be certified by the state. They've now been certified, so I'm ready to buy the 450. And ESNS is willing to give us a trade-in of $5,805 for the old equipment. I purchased the old equipment, what I'm currently using, from Escambia County for $12,000. They were, it was surplus for them, so, you know, I think we've managed the county's money pretty wisely.
Well, pay for the first year.
Well, that's in the contract, that reduction.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So we'll take these requests one at a time?
Yeah.
Do y'all want to go ahead and consider this one?
Please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If the board entertains approval, you might also want to consider declaring it a sole source vendor.
I have one question, Ms. Lynda.
Yes, sir.
Is the DS 450, is it used statewide now or?
It is.
Are there different things used in different places?
It's not the only, this is for counting absentees. Rather than feeding them through one at a time, you can feed stacks through like this. There are, there's the 850, which I have now, or I have the 650. There's an 850 that's, that's a higher price that the larger counties use, and then there's the 450. The 450 has just been certified this year, so this is, will be the first year that we'll be using it.
Okay. Any further questions on this one?
Just curious, will it be available in November when you do, or?
I would like to have it for the primary.
Meaning we need to approve it tonight so she can get it?
Get moving, yeah.
I have one more question, Ms. Lynda. How, will it do extinct, or is it something you can upgrade?
Yeah, well, I'm sure when the time comes that they no longer certify this, they will have something else that they will certify, and they would, they always offer us a trade-in for whatever we, if we upgrade to something.
I'm sure to refer the contract for the purchase to me.
You want to go ahead and speak on that?
No, I, Ms. Lynda, when you get, I know this is just a proposal, when they send in the contract agreement to you, if you'd forward it over to me.
Now, they did, it is in that packet, there isn't?
Not, no, all I have is the.
I think it's on the back page, isn't it?
No, not the last.
Okay, I see what you're saying, when, the contract, okay. Right.
I will. Before we sign, now, am I going to sign this, or is the board chairman going to sign it?
As part of the motion, you can authorize her to do that.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good. Mrs. Williams, this ESNS, was this on a, from a government contract, competitively bid contract, or is this genuinely a sole source that you're talking with?
What we have, when we bought the DS 200s, the state went into an agreement with 12 counties, and the state was willing to pay for the purchase upfront. We never could come to an agreement, so we paid for it, and the state's paying us back for it. Am I not answering your question?
We have, we have an agreement with ESNS.
We all, that is the only company that we have our elections equip, our tabulating equipment with.
It is a sole source.
It is, yes.
If it is a sole source, do we need to declare it in the motion?
Right, I would.
Declare it in the motion, a sole source, and authorize supervisor election to sign for it.
Once the county attorney's.
Once the county attorneys approve the contract.
Okay.
Can I get that in a motion from anyone to approve it?
Chairman, I make a motion, just as you stated it.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, next request.
Okay. We've been asked by Dowling Park, this has been in discussion for years. Once we got a library, they wanted us to move our voting precinct from the location that it's at to the library. We've spoken with Ms. Betty, and she's in agreement to that, so we would like to be able to move it from one location to the other. And so doing, we send out new voter cards to every voter in that district, letting them know that, or in that precinct, letting them know that we've made a change. And then we would also have someone at the old location on Election Day directing voters to the new location. We'll do that for the primary and for the general.
I make a motion to move the voting location to the library.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Where will they be setting up, in the, in the meeting room?
Nobody in the meeting room. We have a similar situation in Grand, but like spring, a couple of libraries.
So they can just, they won't have to walk into the library, they just walk in through the foyer area and go to the meeting room?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Just, is this going to have any major impact to your budget this year, as far as the printing of the new cards and?
I don't think so. We, I don't anticipate asking for anything additional for this.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, a second by Commissioner Fleming to approve this second request. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, third request.
And then, for the primary, when we set up for early voting, it will be the third week in August, when you all have a county commissioners meeting. So I'm asking, would you be willing to meet at the city hall for that meeting, so that we won't have to move all of our equipment out and then have it back in before 8:30 the next morning?
You've already cleared, it's open that night, isn't it? I have prob, no problem with that.
I don't need a problem.
You getting a form of a motion to move it?
Make a motion.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
And then I had one other thing that I wanted to mention, if I have permission.
Yes, go right ahead.
I need, as the chairman of the board of county commissioners, it follows your lot to serve on the canvassing board, but we're required to have an alternate for you in line, should there be a need, should you not be able to be present for any of the meetings. So can I ask you to appoint someone tonight or at your next meeting?
We'll go ahead and take care of that. Commissioner Hale's agreed to do it. Thanks, sir.
We will, we will only need you if Ricky doesn't appear, so.
That's right, and I'll be driving him up there, so he'll be there.
It's, I enjoy it, I'll be there, God willing.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Mr. Harris, Public Works.
That's about all I have. Do y'all have any questions?
None, I've won. Let's go on to the next.
Actually, I can give you a quick update on a few things and be glad to entertain questions. The chip seal roads have been completed, the first batch that we had started, so you will see some striping on some of those roads very soon, just waiting for it to cure a little bit. The chairman and Mr. Pavat and I met in Lake City with DOT and the developer of that Dollar General, or whatever it is, out there on 50, 51?
51 and 250.
And 250, the, to talk about the realignment of that intersection. You had some items in the consent agenda, we're going to be bringing back a development agreement with the developer on that, share the expenses associated with that, because after we had that meeting and left, there was a discussion that occurred after that that essentially means that the county needs to be the lead on the permitting. It'll streamline the process, and the developer just needs to pay the cost of the construction on their side of 51. So that development of agreement, hopefully, we'll come back to in the next board meeting. 136 should start reconstruction about the time that 29th Road is being completed. We're trying our best to keep the contractor on 29th Road, and, you know, we've had some inclement weather, and it gets pretty nasty out there, so hopefully they'll have that wrapped up within the next couple of months, or pretty close to it. And then they can move on over to 136 at the interchange of I-75 and start construction, construction headed back toward town. And Mr. Hancock had asked me this question before, but I'll just tell you that the funding was insufficient to run all the way back to 417 like we had initially hoped, so that project will end close to, within about six tenths of a mile from Hogan Road. So we'll have multiple phases associated with that project ultimately. County staff is out working now, prepping the base for the balance of the chip seal roads that the board had approved previously. In your consent agenda, you had a couple that were swapping out for the road that DOT is going to be constructing now. This week, tomorrow in fact, I'll be meeting with Mr. Powell, our auditor, and probably Mr. Baker and some others, Mr. Williams. There'll be some others in attendance to discuss the RFP that we plan to advertise for lenders associated with the chip seal MSBU programs, so we can get rates of them, and then that will be advertised soon. In tonight's agenda, the board approved the authorization to go to bid on the balance of the chip seal roads that we're currently prepping and those associated with the MSBU programs, which we need so that, because we don't plan to do the base work on those MSBU projects either, we just don't have enough time and manpower. US 90 turn lanes are still under construction, we've had a few opportunities with that project. Had some utilities show up in the construction path that no one had claimed, even with all the attempts to have everything located out there, these lines showed up, and I don't think anyone's claimed them yet, but we're not going to cut through them, so we're making some adjustments, try to mitigate that. So that construction continues to proceed. We have run into a little issue with the construction of the rail spur. I would say that, for the most part, the reason for it is a significant shakeup with CSX. Many of you may know that CSX has been undergoing some significant change. I think they're trying to become, I think the idea is that they become more like the private sector long-term. I don't know if that'll ever be accomplished, but they've had quite a shakeup over there trying to downsize and become more cost-effective. They were really overloaded with personnel over there, and they had made some initial cuts and retired some people earlier last year. We actually had one representative of CSX that had continued to be employed over there, and I'm talking about in Jacksonville, their headquarters, and we had dealt with this person. It was our primary contact on everything associated with rail spur project, and two weeks ago, we discovered that that person is no longer employed with CSX. So while we had gone to great lengths to complete, execute all of the forms associated with our agreements to build the rail spur and have access, the newest person sent us a new form, several pages, that had to be completed so that we can send back now. So my hope is that we are nearing the end of all the paperwork associated with CSX and the rail spur, so that the contractor can actually get started. We had given them six months in the contract, they should be well underway, but this has all just resulted in a delay. So my hope is that the rail spur is underway soon. If someone could help me plug in, I've got an overhead, some slides I want to show y'all. It'll only take about 35, 40 minutes. But I'll try, I'll just go ahead, maybe I can cover that.
Don't jump up all at once.
It's broke. No, actually, I only have one more item, and I'll pass on the slide presentation in this meeting.
Thank you.
Our last item that I wanted to cover is, we are still waiting, we've got a couple more weeks till the requests for qualifications are wrapped up for the utilities, and then there will be a process following that, where we score all of those and ultimately bring back. My hope is, more than one recommendation, because I've really been considering all this time, and it spells this out in the advertisement or in the specifications for the requests for qualifications, that my hope is, we select two engineering firms, because we've got water going, we've got sewer going, and I want to make sure that we continue to move these projects forward as efficiently and save as much time as we can. So I'll be bringing that back to you. Now, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
Any questions from Mr. Harris?
Just one, nothing's going to change as far as the route of that spur in there, everything will remain the same there, you're just.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this latest stack of paper that had to be completed, had nothing to do with the route. They're, they're actually calling it an access agreement. Well, if you recall, I think we already spent $758,000 in an agreement that Mr. Pavat and I had worked on for, well, actually, more than months, probably over a year, and that was supposed to be the final product. And we executed that agreement, we paid them the money. As far as all of us knew, and, I mean, even for the last several months, we were finished. But then they sent another agreement wanting us to identify all of the grant entities that we're involved in, and they had a series of other questions, so we've completed that and sent it back to them. My hope is, we're finished now, so we can actually start working out there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to general business, item 16, discuss with possible board action, business incentive grant, application by Live Oak Tire Center LLC. Dr. Jackson is out of town for some economic development work, I believe it's on your shoulders.
Just a brief comment, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this application has been scrutinized with all the original criteria and the policy that the board had established previously. They meet the criteria, and the recommendation is to go ahead and approve this agreement, just like you have all of the others that have met the criteria. Live Oak Tire Center LLC would be given a rebate, incentive rebate, and the total amount of $22,995 to be rebated over a seven-year period. This is performance-based, by the way, I just want to.
Performance-based, and that is spread over seven annual installments.
Seven years, that's correct.
Which would be, what is that, $3,285 a year?
Right. Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to item 17, discuss possible board action, any issues associated with the water or wastewater plant at I-75 and 136.
Last update that I gave the board is, we're still in kind of the same position on survey and evaluating easements, and once we complete all of that and get some preliminary agreements from property owners, including state agencies, we will reduce those to some formal agreements and eventually bring those back to the board.
Is that it?
Yes.
Moving on to item 18, additional agenda items, we have just a few. Item number one is declare surplus and authorize sale of two obsolete tractors. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Harris?
I see.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Sorry.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. I heard it from both sides, I got to say that.
You got two ears, it works.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to item number two, request authorization, or authorization to request utility rate from the city of Alave to locate, to a location outside of the city limits. You want to touch on that any, Mr. Harris?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we had this discussion in the joint workshop with the city. This is simply an attempt to continue that conversation, and I think this might be easier for the city to consider. Some of you may recall, you know, the long-drawn-out ordeal related to the question of the county providing fire service to the city. It was the late Mr. Mixon that came and initially approached the county with that question, and ultimately, my response was that the request needs to come from the city. We weren't trying to take over their fire service. That was a question that came from them about some potential savings. So what I'm trying to achieve here is something similar. We can follow up with our prior discussions in the workshop and just request that the city provide a rate to us, to a location outside the current city limits, and that gives them an opportunity to respond in writing, it may be easier for them to do that. And we'll just pick a location right up there in the vicinity of where everything is currently happening, north on 129, probably be the easiest. So if the board approves this, I'll put that information together and a location, and we'll just send it on over and see how they respond.
Any questions? I have a motion to approve.
Make it approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All right, item number three, discuss, discussion acceptance of a donation by Swanee Valley Community Coordinated Childcare, Florida Valley, or Swanee Valley foresees a modular building known as Modular One located at 617 Ontario Avenue by Douglas Center. Turn our attention to county attorney Jimmy Pavat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several years ago, you know, Swanee Valley foresees, they ceased operation out there at the Douglas Center. Well, when we were doing our evaluation of the Douglas Center and, you know, where we were headed with that last year, we noted that they really weren't operating anything there except for a storage facility. So we got with them, and they had intended to be out of there and moved all of that, because they've moved all of their operation to another location. So instead of, because the building had a useful life of more than 25 years, they really, under the program grant, they don't have any use for it anymore, and they need to dispose of the building. And one of the suggested things was to dispose of the building by donating it to us, you know, to utilize in whatever manner we see fit. Because the program, it was a federal program, it took them several months to be able to get permission to donate it, even burn it down. It took them, you know, a while to be able to do that. But, so they finally got permission over the weekend, and that's why it's an additional agenda item, I got it to you as quickly as could, for y'all to consider, you know, accepting the donation of that modular building that's at the Douglas Center.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is, is it just the modular, or is it?
We own the land.
The property, we own the land already?
We own, yeah.
Part of, okay.
We own the property.
So then the question, the next question is, is it usable for anything? Can't, it says it's, it's not suitable for sale, can it be used for storage, or is it leaking, is it a problem? Need to demolish?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Respond to that. We spoke about this earlier today, Mr. Pavat and I, we need to request a key. It could be in decent shape, I'm not sure yet, but we're going to request a key, go inside, check it out. Couple of thoughts that I had, one is that, some of you may know, that we've got to replace that scale house down there in the mine. We've talked about that, that thing is rotting to the ground. That is a possibility, relocating this small modular building down there, putting it back together. We'd have to, you know, check, see what it would cost to do that, I'm not sure yet.
It's double wide?
It's in two pieces.
Essentially double wide.
I guess you'd call it a double wide. If it's cost prohibitive to do that?
About, the best price I got just recently, I called for some quotes, was five grand, within 50 miles.
Relocated?
Mm-hmm. Not on that one, on a different one I was looking at, but it's anywhere from five to 10, quarter prices.
I agree, that we've, I had a church that was looking for those modular units, and prices back four, five years ago were the same.
So I would just need to get in it, check it out, and see what options, you know, we really have there, and I can report that back to you.
Mr. Chairman, can we table this, or put it off till next, to another, a future?
Well, the question is whether or not we're going to take the building. It's on, it's already on our land.
We'll just do it in, we'll just make a motion contingent that you accept.
In usable condition.
It's in usable condition, yeah. Can we do that?
Yeah, if we accept the donation, even if we decide we don't want to move it, there's somebody that you can, I mean, we can surplus it and get rid of it.
Right. Yeah. Just remember, I wasn't here when you accepted the donation of the school board.
It's a double-wide trailer, it ain't, it's up there.
Well, none of us were here. Well, none of us were here at that time. You're talking about the old schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, the old school.
Yeah, we weren't here.
You always put a root on it.
I would agree with Commissioner Sessions, you saying, first of all, you need to go in there, take a look at it, see if it's worth being moved and utilizing. Maybe that's rotted or just undesigned to move it.
Well, if, if it isn't worth moving, then it just needs to be disposed of. I mean, their issue was that it had cleared the time necessary for them to keep it to comply with their grants. They don't currently have a use for it. I don't know the condition of it. It may be in great shape. I don't have any idea, but we'll know more later. So, the question today is, are we going to accept this building that's been on our property for many, many years?
Well, we're stuck with it now anyway. It's on the property, so I think the right thing to do is get the key to look at it and see what it, what it needs or, then you know, we know what to do from there. So, you just need a motion for that fact.
It's going to have some value to it. We're going to leave it where it's been for 20-plus years.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And then, I'll figure out if it's something that we can use.
Well, I'm sure we can get rid of it for something.
And so, even the salvage, it'll have a value to it whether you get a vinyl siding or the steel frame or whatever, but.
Value, value is going to be probably negative if we have to dispose of it because we have to pay then. I looked at another, the other letter, and the letter she sent to, to Administration for Children and Families, that there was another location that would cost about $3,700, $3,800 to demolish. And, you know, I'm looking at that and thinking, can fire use it for a, no.
For practice.
Practice, yeah. Training purposes, but no.
About the same.
There's so many street markets and we have to have a UPA regulation of it and prove there's no asbestos in it, report, lean, there's no lean, there's no insurance, you know, there's so much stuff. And, why to look at that building? There's not much to it.
Yes, sir.
One of the problems that they have with being Swanee Valley Foresees is, you know, they are a nonprofit and they don't have the budget to be able to dispose of the building. Even if we wanted them to go in there and make them move it, you know, they can't really have the money with that. And so, they would turn around then and the next thing we would get would be a request from the Foresees to the county to donate the money to be able to move the building, you know, so, you know, I mean, one way or the other, we've got it. It's on our land and it's cleared the feds now. We might as well have, have ownership of it.
Even if there's no value to it and we decide demolish it, Mr. Harris has got the equipment at Public Works to make pretty quick work of that. We can haul it to a C and D, take the metal to a scrapyard. Swanee Valley Foresees has been on the receiving end of donations from Swanee County for, up until recently, for years.
Yeah.
We just recently, I think, stopped donating to them, so like Mr. Pavat just said, one way or the other, we're going to wind up paying for it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we accept, take the acceptance, move forward.
I got a motion to accept the donation by Mr. Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. That was it for additional agenda items. Just one thing I want to, just a little piece of information. It was what, Gilchrist County had asked permission from us to, for them to piggyback on a, what was it for? The billing agreement, that was it. I just signed a letter earlier authorizing, saying it was okay for them to bill, piggyback, and I wanted to make y'all aware of it. Other than that, I don't have anything else. All right, this time, we'll move on to item 19, public concerns and comments. Anyone wishing to speak, make way to the podium, name, go ahead. Seeing none, move on to administrator comments.
Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned to me these dead, small dead trees out.
Yeah, I actually have it wrote down to bring it up and talk to you about it, so this is good as time as any.
I can handle that. You know, we don't have a budget line for replacing dead, small landscape things like out here in front of this building. We've got some neighbors that have been complaining about it and Chairman and I spoke about it. I can just go ahead and replace those rather than put them on the agenda unless that creates any heartburn from anyone.
I don't have a problem with it.
Good with that. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, if it's time for me to do this now, was I next on your list?
Yes, you're good.
For your comments?
That's where we're at.
Was that I went to, took my wife down to the catfish festival in Branford, had a real good time. Somehow, my left ear got sunburned. I'm not sure how that happened. I may have to walk in different next time, but in any event, it was a real good event. Ate some catfish down there, had a lot of fun, had some decent vendors down there, good music. Temperature was beautiful. I mean, it couldn't have been a nicer day for that event. Appeared to have a real good turnout down there and I think everyone probably enjoyed themselves. It was just a really nice event.
They estimated about 5,500 last hour, about the end of the day.
Pretty good, yeah.
Which is a pretty good, it's a pretty much a higher turnout than last year. A lot higher turnout last year.
Good deal. Anything else? Moving on to item 21, board members' requests and comments. I will start with you, Mr. Richardson.
I have none, just except to piggyback on what he said about the catfish festival. If you missed it, it's a great turnout. It was a good, the music was fantastic and I'll be honest with you, I've heard concerts. Been in a couple of concerts every once in a while. I go to, very seldom. I've listened to a lot of music on, in fact, I was watching the Academy of Country Music. Was it, I guess it was the ACM Awards this weekend. Their music wasn't any better than the music that was out in, in Branford. So, next year, when you get a chance, you missed it this year, you got some really good groups out there.
Is that it? Mr. Fleming?
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Hale?
I don't have anything.
Sessions?
I just want to thank Clyde for going to meet today with the DOT, furthering our interest over there in Lake City with the things we're trying to move forward. I was unable to go.
Been hearing good things about those meetings. All right, I don't have anything other than they go that the catfish festival was a good, good show out. Only complaint that I had was from my kids. They said they wanted bounce houses next year. They were, they were a little disappointed it wasn't anything from the jump on play-in, but other than that, the music was great, the food was good and we had a good time. So, I don't have anything else. If no one has anything? Yes, sir.
I just want to make a brief comment. Mr. Fleming called me about attending that meeting today in Lake City. I'm just going to point out that the chairman and I and clerk and several others had a meeting at the same time at the courthouse to discuss IT, computers, everything else, working together, buying bulk and lots of other things that the board has discussed. But I too appreciate what's going on. I think it's making a big difference, that meeting with DOT and how they're viewing the multiple requests that we've made that, you know, until more recently, just seemed like they were stalled. So, that meeting is, and that discussion is, is making an impact with DOT and I appreciate it. So, my hope is to attend some of those meetings going forward as well.
Yep, squeaky wheel.
That's right.
Absolutely.
They, they recognize us now.
That's it, squeaky wheel.
Absolutely.
Yes, degrees. If there's nothing else, just need a motion to adjourn, fellas.
Move to adjourn.